All right, we'll call the meeting to order on behalf of the planning commission. I'd like to welcome our residents and viewers to this regular meeting of July 8th, 2025. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings. Before we get into those public hearings, we have one housekeeping item. That would be the minutes from our June 10th regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion?
A motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. With that then, we're going to open up both public hearings at this time. We'll take them in order as shown on the agenda. The first public hearing is a conditional use permit to construct a community solar garden. The location is south of County Road 50, west side of Flagstaff Avenue. The applicant is Dimension Energy. And Jared, you're going to take this.
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the planning commission. So tonight is request for a conditional use permit to construct a community solar garden on PID 140340087010. It is currently unaddressed. So the applicant is Dimension Energy. They would be the tenant of the site. They would be looking to lease the property from the property owner, Brian Murphy. This site is currently zoned A1 agriculture, where solar gardens are conditional use, and it is God for agriculture in the 2040 comprehensive plan. Currently, the site is used as farmland, and surrounding uses include farmland to the north and south, a single-family residence directly to the east, and then vacant industrial land within the city of Lakeville to the west. So the purpose of this project is to capitalize on the growing need for clean and renewable energy, as well as supplementing Excel Energy's increasing requirements for utility companies to obtain electrical power from renewable resources. And as you can see here on the right-hand side on the location map, this gray line that runs down here is the boundary between Farmington and Lakeville, so it abuts Lakeville just to the west. So getting into the site plan, overall, it would be a 4.95 megawatt community solar garden across a 30-acre parcel. The project area would encompass 18.54 acres of that parcel. Currently, access into the site comes from a private driveway easement off Flagstaff Avenue further to the east. This private driveway easement serves the adjacent residents to the east side as well. As you can see down here in the southeastern corner, the access drive, or there's a little unimproved driveway easement where this access drive would connect into and go into the site. And as you can see, the property is kind of laid out in two distinct areas where the panels are, and this is due to some of the property, or some of the constraints on the property. This includes two wetlands that were delineated right here in the middle, a smaller one here and a larger one here. There's a gas pipeline easement that runs, let's see here, from the southwestern corner and goes up through this way. Also, Excel's service territory stops right at the south end of where the panels stop, so that's why there's no more panels within this southern portion. And then as well as future extension of County Road 70, as you can see in the southwestern portion here, County Road 70 is proposed in the future to be extended from Lakeville down through the southwestern corner of the site. So considering these factors, the panels are laid out in this kind of two separated areas. I will note that the access drive runs along the eastern bound, or eastern property boundary, and then cuts up into the site with two access gates proposed for each area of panels. The panels meet all applicable setbacks in the A1 district. This would be 20 feet from the side and rear yards, and then 50 feet in the front yard. There's also a seven-foot-tall electric fence proposed to surround the panel areas. So currently, there are two types of panels that would be proposed. This would be finalized at building permits submittal. It would either be a single access tilt, which is on your left, or a fixed tilt on your right. I do want to note that I put in the packet that it would be up to 10 feet tall, but it would actually be up to 12 feet tall, and that would be the max height that it would reach. So I just want to fix that in there. Some other notes, the access road is proposed to be gravel. Per code, it must be paved, so this will be a condition of approval. County Road 70, as I mentioned earlier, is proposed to loop through that southwestern corner of the site. This must be platted as a condition of approval, because the county would like this dedicated right away when the property is developed. So as a condition of approval, we will require that the property get platted and approved by city council. As far as landscaping goes, the ground beneath the panels will be reseeded with low-growth grasses. There are roughly 54 trees around the larger wetland around the north side that are proposed to be removed. A tree replacement plan will need to be submitted to the city and will be also required as a condition of approval. As far as utilities go, there's no public infrastructure proposed, but the applicant is still working with engineering on stormwater management for the site. And also, what is typical with these larger-scale solar gardens is requiring a decommissioning plan. So this will be in place to ensure that panels are removed and the site is restored once the solar garden reaches the end of its useful life, which can be between 20 to 30-plus years. So there are six requirements per code that CUPs must meet. Staff believes that all six of these are met, and these are included in your packet as well. So the action requested before the planning commission tonight is to approve the requested conditional use permit, subject to the following conditions. The preliminary and final plat application for the subject property is submitted and approved by city council. All necessary building permits are obtained. All engineering comments and requirements are met. A copy of the encroachment agreement with the gas company is submitted at the time of the building permits submittal. This is just for that access road that goes through that easement area. A copy of the signed lease agreement with Brian Murphy is submitted at the time of building permits submittal. The decommissioning plan is signed and executed with the city prior to release of the building permit. A tree replacement plan is submitted and approved by the city prior to release of the building permit, and then the access road must be paved. And the applicants are with us tonight, and they'll give you guys a brief presentation about who they are.
All right, thank you Jared. Welcome gentlemen, I don't know which one's going to speak or do the presentation.
We're both.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you.
You're going to keep it under an hour, right?
I will try.
All right.
No, he's going to be really quick.
All right, thank you.
Jared did a great job in trying not to repeat, you know, the information you already got. But thank you, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Daniel Solozano, here at Dimension Energy. I act as the Director of Development for the Midwest. And so we just have a few slides here, project slides, and who we are as a company. Dimension was founded in 2018. We're, are focused, extremely focused in community solar projects throughout the entire, entirety of the country, mainly on the east, in the coasts, east coast and west coast. I came in to work on the Midwest, so we have about 500 megawatts now in Illinois, trying to develop projects in Wisconsin, Minnesota now. So in Minnesota, we have about five, five to six projects totaling about 35 to 40 megawatts. We are, yeah, so we are an owner and operator, so you see a lot of developers working now. Nowadays, just trying to get the permits, get entitlements, get everything you need to get the project settled, entitled, and then they sell the project to a bigger developer, somebody that can finance and, you know, run it. We're not going to do that, we're going to, you know, keep, maintain ownership of the project through the life of the project. So we have a very robust team in New York City. I work in development, they have a lot of teams, but mainly in New York City, we have a team that's going to be working after me, both building the project and then operating it. So, yeah, very, very great company to be at, honestly. I've seen a lot of them, and Dimension is definitely up there. But, um, yeah, with me, I have Alex Furno with EOR. So Alex, if you don't want to...
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Furno. I'm an environmental planner with Evans &amp; Oliver Resources, or short for that, we're just EOR. We're a water resource-based company that's been active in many, or St. Paul, for over 30 years. We specialize in environmental engineering and have teams who have been involved in all parts of this project, from wetland delineation to tree surveying, permitting, and civil engineering on this project. So we're proud to lend our expertise to the Dimension team and happy to cover any environmental questions that you may have this evening.
Like I said, I'm going to skip a lot of these slides, location-wise, just bottom corner of the city, southwest corner. Just things to mention here, project area mainly covers the blue area here on your right. That was reduced based on where Excel has their territory. We didn't know at the time, but essentially, you have Excel and Dakota Utility. Essentially, you know, Excel doesn't allow us to have any of our infrastructure in their territory, so we had to reduce that size to what you see now, and also was reduced because of the extension of County Road 70. So highly constrained sites, we tried to make it work as much as we could. And the orange areas are the preliminary easements that we intend to use or put in place. The one on the north side will be the tree replacement area. That's where we will be, you know, of the trees that we'll be cutting down, that's where we plan to install them, which will also be serving as a tree buffer, like a visual buffer for the north area. Because there's, if you see the yellow up there in the right corner northeast, those are housing units, so we plan to place some trees there that, you know, will block the view, pretty much. And then the other one is just access, access to the site that we already have. Brian Murphy also owns that area, so we'll, we have that in our lease agreement. You already had this information, but essentially, anything here that's new would be the program, the project, we plan to apply to the program. There's two programs right now available for these type of projects. One is the community solar garden program that the state has. It has limited capacity, so, and it's first come, first served. So one of the requirements is to have entitlements, such as your approval, and then the other one is to have interconnection agreement in place. So both are, you know, obviously, we're here for one, and the other one is we're very close to having an interconnection agreement signed. So ones, that the interconnection approval process is multiple step process, where you apply, you pay a fee, utility Excel reviews the application, sees if they can hold the energy, the power that you're going to be pushing in, and tells the applicant how much, you know, there's going to be an upgrade process to allow this to happen, both in, you know, infrastructure improvements, so there's a cost to it that the project itself's going to pay, so taxpayers don't pay that if the project for any upgrades. And, you know, if the applicant approves that, then they'll move to the next stage, and that's where we are right now. We're just waiting to see the final, it goes through stages. First, they give us an estimate, just a range, a couple of hundred thousand dollars in ranges, and then they give us the actual estimate, and that's where we are. We're just waiting for the actual estimate, and we should have it pretty soon, in the next month or so. And then, lastly, the application for, once we have those two, we'll apply for the program. If we don't get into the state program, we'll get into Excel. Excel has a different program, DG program, so we'll be applying for that too, if the state program doesn't, doesn't have capacity. And then, this is community solar project, so we expect to have subscribers. It could be anyone. It could be an individual, organization, public or private. So we expect typical savings of between 5 and 15% in their utility bills. Yeah, upfront, nothing to do. So there's not, not going to be any cost for the subscriber to sign up, or if they choose to, you know, remove themselves from the subscription. In terms of Farmington and the county, Dakota County, Minnesota generates revenue through the solar energy generating systems. You know, essentially, we have to pay $1.20 per megawatt hour of electricity produced. And just to make it short for you, what we estimate is an increase from, you know, current payment of $1,000 to about $20,000 per year. That in a 35-year lifetime would be 750, just under, for the project, and then, you know, that's a significant increase from the 50 that you would see in the next 35 years. The way that, you know, the state and county devise it is listed here, and this are preliminary estimates, so the city would get 180,000 in that 35-year period. You want to just briefly touch base on this?
Yeah, I'll just briefly touch on some of the due diligence that came as we were preparing for this project. So as I mentioned, and as Jared mentioned, there's two wetlands up in the top there that are on the site. Both of those are kind of in the lowest tier of wetlands that are classified, and we stay outside of the average buffer for those. So those are things that would have sediment logs around them that prevent them from sediment, from draining into those. There were no kind of archaeological, historical, or cultural resources identified on the site. When we did a Phase 1 environmental scan on the site, there were some things that we noticed on adjoining properties, but nothing on the site itself that were kind of cause for concern. And then as the project proceeds, there's more geology and geotechnical that goes into it as kind of various elements of the design are cited on there to make sure that what we're building on top of is, is stable, and if there's any soil corrections that need to happen when the pilings are going in. Again, this is the site. I think Jared did a really great job of explaining this, so I won't explain or speak to this any further, but if there's anything that we have on that that you are interested in knowing more about, happy to field any questions there. Want to talk about interconnection?
Yep. Yeah, just briefly here, I think one, one of the things, the gated entrances, the reason that we built it this way is because Excel needs access to the point of interconnection. So they don't want to be inside the sites, so they need to be outside. And then, sorry, one more thing. The type of panel, most likely it's going to be a tracker panel, so it just follows, you know, path of the sun, 90% chance that that's what we're going to choose. So, yeah, we placed two types of trackers, just in case, but most likely it's going to be a tracker. Yeah, so finally, the interconnection status, like I said, we're in the final study results right now, stage, and we're actually expecting the interconnection agreement to come into in the next week. So it's pretty soon. The type of poles that you're going to see is just a three to five pole layout that are going to be placed somewhere in this corner. So that's going to be overhead, so it's going to come up here, and then it's going to go down again. So it's going to be underground towards the, to the site, and then underground towards the, the actual infrastructure where it's using Flagstaff Avenue. You don't see it here, but it's, oh, actually, I put a picture here. So this is the pole that we'll most likely interconnect to. It'll go underground, they'll bore, and then just go somewhere where, where the project is, in here.
Yeah, so as we move forward in the project, we'll have, be able, be providing a SWIP and sediment control plan, so this project doesn't propose very substantial grading on that site. It's kept to a minimum because of how flat the topography is already. On top of that, we've got the reseeding requirements with native perennial grass underneath the panels will help keep that soil in place, often better than what you see already in the row crops that are there. So that will have advantages in terms of less stormwater coming off the site, less sediment kind of being washed away. And then during the construction, there'll be a silt fence around the perimeter that will keep, keep things contained, and then that vegetation management is maintained by Dimension and kind of mowed periodically to keep it so that it's away from those panels, and there's enough clearance underneath there. In terms of decommissioning, we're working, adheres to the federal, state, local codes. In terms, there'll be kind of very kind of thorough communication in the event of abandonment, and those kind of components of the project, many of which can be recycled, the panels, the electrical systems, much of the, like, the fencing, the posts that are in the racking that's installed on there. And so when we look at the decommissioning cost of it, we kind of had prepared an estimate based on the materials that are involved there. You're looking at a decommissioning total of about $26,000, but when you factor in salvaging, you can kind of salvage about 155, actually, $156,000 worth of material from that site. The end, and I believe with the...
Yeah, I just want to touch, I did add this slide for timing, for next steps in terms of what we plan to do. So right now, like I said, we're in the process of getting an interconnection study in place. Once we have that, we'll apply for the program. The program, we expect to have news from the state between August and September. If they decline our application, then we'll go to the Excel DG program, and we expect to have information about that in November. If any of those two are successful, then we'll start construction sometime in spring, as soon as possible. With the, you know, current administrations, I don't know if you follow the news for us, but it's a lot more complicated, a lot of more restrictions. The investment tax credit's going to go away pretty soon, probably sooner, I'm not sure. There was an executive order yesterday, so we're still trying to figure it out, if we can actually use it, but regardless of that, we'll, we'll still, if it's, you know, if the investment tax credit goes away tomorrow, we'll still go ahead and build this project. So that's not going to be a deterrent, I mean, it's only a deterrent, but it's not going to prevent us from doing it. So, yeah, we'll try and just build this as quickly as we can and, you know, get it in operation as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. If you could stay available, if there's questions, either from our residents or the commission?
Yep.
I'd appreciate that. This is a public hearing. If you have a comment or a question, please raise your hand, we're calling you. We're going to ask you to come to the podium, just state your name and address, please. Any questions? If not now, we'll come back at the end of the commission. Sir, did you have something? Okay, we'll come back at the end. If somebody thinks of something, we'll call you in afterwards. Start with Commissioner Teske.
Ah, yeah, I think this looks good. It's very thorough. I'm happy to see that there's, you know, follow-through on the encroachments to make sure we're not going over things. And I'm also excited to see the decommissioning and thinking about the future and the infrastructure, you know, needs to take, to take it down if and when that happens, and then the very thorough estimate around the salvage in that, very awesome to see. Just a random question, you said it was a leased piece of property, it's not a purchased piece of property, correct?
That's right.
You're leasing it, okay, because that just folds into the decommissioning piece, just making sure that's following through. And then, just a broader question, with this solar garden, does the energy go back to the community of Farmington or to the broader resident of the Excel customer base?
So it doesn't go to the community, it goes to Excel?
Yeah.
So Excel distributes it?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Go onto what's called the grid.
The grid.
Commissioner Windshuttle?
No, I think it looks real good. I appreciate all this detailed information that's in here. Just a couple of simple questions. What generally, for distance, is the buffer between the water ponds and the solar panels? I know it can vary, but...
Yeah, the, the closest we stay on that one wetland, if I can maybe go back into it. So if you look over here on this one, oop, here we go. So around there, that kind of hatch line around there is 25 feet, and this is the only place in which we, the 25 buffer average is kind of what's set out in the wetland standards in the city's code. You have to stay at least 16 and a half feet away from that, and so we're, in all cases, we're more than 16 and a half feet away from that, and then we've made up that kind of incursion into the 25-foot buffer through those other spaces around it, so you can kind of see in those kind of gaps that are around it in the corners here, those are kind of the areas that are being planted as well, that are going to have that benefit of just kind of shielding that, that wetland. And so these ones are, this, over here on this one, you're kind of well outside of 25 feet on it there, and then you're kind of over 100, there's a creek that's a little bit off to the side over up here, not sure if there's a better one, you can kind of see it up here. That one, you are in excess of 100 feet away from the official high-water mark for that one.
Thank you. And then just last, simple question. So you have a development term, and that's for three years? Is that how I'm reading this, right? And then?
That's right.
And then it's leased for 25?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have it built within that three years, obviously, you've said in the spring you plan...
Yeah, even before that, we'll sign the lease.
Okay.
So once we're through the process of interconnection with the city of Farmington and the program, we'll sign the lease.
Sure. And how, just curious, how long does it take to build the whole project?
Between four and six months.
Four and six months?
Yeah, if we were building in the winters, it's just going to be longer, but yeah.
Thank you, looks good.
Commissioner Snowbuck?
Nice job, appreciate it. Commissioner Teske took all my great questions. Can you explain more? You talked a little bit about the 5 to 10%, you know, citizens can apply to be a part of the program and receive a 5 to 10% discount. How does that work if you're selling the energy to Excel? How does that work?
Yeah, so we offer to provide energy on the supply side of the bill, and we'll give the subscriber essentially a fixed amount of rate. And I cannot tell you right now what it is, it'll be determined at a later point, but essentially, we're selling energy to the Excel customer. It's, you know, it's not a Farmington citizen, that's, I just want to be clear with that. It's an Excel customer. It has to be somebody that is a customer of Excel.
So then they apply, why would they receive a 5 to 10% decrease in their, the members that live in that area? How does that work? How's the subscription work?
Yeah, so they'll just, it'll be a simple website, they'll put information in, account number, and, yeah, we'll just send out the paperwork for them to sign it. It's pretty simple.
Okay, well, good. That was, that's all I have. Appreciate all your work, and the decommissioning thing was important to me, too, that, that was laid out so well, so thanks for your work on that.
And Mitch, that isn't unusual, that, that discount, if you want to call it, and this is, would be on the generation side, not the distribution side?
Yeah, you know, I'm not on that team, unfortunately for me, and it works very different between each, each, not only each location, but each utility. I know in Illinois, it works for both sides.
Okay.
But in your total bill, you'll be between 5 and 15% discount.
They've done it for wind energy also in the past for different utilities, so it's not unusual, it's just, it's, you did a good job of explaining it, but it, it can be a little bit of a complicated process.
Yeah, and honestly, even for me right now, for Excel here in Minnesota, I'm not sure, how's, how's it going to be laid out, but I can provide more information later.
That'd be more, that'd be more for the, those customers and residents that are planning to utilize that, not for the commission, doesn't need that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Anything else, Mitch?
No, I'm good, thank you. No, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Berg.
Yeah, you guys did a great job of laying everything out. I had a lot of the similar questions that the other folks had. I did have just a quick question, Jared, this might be more for you around the paved driveway. That does not include flagstaff, I am assuming, right? That section from 50 down, flagstaff, right? That's still gonna remain gravel?
Correct, yeah, unfortunately, we can't, let's see here, require that to be paved at this time, but as you can see on the right hand, this is where the easement starts, the gravel goes all the way towards the end. We, since the property's being developed at this time, and with our current ordinances, we would require, once it reaches that property line, that portion gets paved.
Okay, that makes sense. That's kind of what I assumed, but I just wanted to clarify. And there's no concern from emergency services with having access in there once it's built, if there was a need for fire or something like that?
Correct, no, fire has signed off on it, even with, you know, like, water connections with solar, these solar, community solar gardens, sounds like the state removed any, you know, fire sort of requirements around that, so there's no concerns for that.
Great. One last question, and this is just for you guys in general, is you mentioned other projects in Minnesota, have you, are there ones that have been completed already that you've worked on?
No, they're not yet, they're at the same stage, so we're about to get all the applications into the state program, so, yeah, these, actually, this project will be one of the first two to go in, just based on where it is, yeah.
Yeah, I was only asking, cuz if there's one that was completed, I was just gonna ask where it was at and what your experience was there, but that sounds good.
No, one is in Lyon County, the other two are in Rice County.
Oh, okay.
So, very close to here.
Yeah, great, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Andy. Great job, questions, commissioners, I think you explained the timing fairly well. The only question I had is if you don't get either subsidy, you're still gonna do the project, you said?
What's that?
If you don't get any, the, either the current one through the state or the Excel one, you're still gonna do the project regardless?
So, maybe, for those two programs, so we're expecting to have either the state or the DG program. What I said was, if for, from the perspective of the federal side, with the ITC, if that is revoked entirely tomorrow, we'll still build it with the state program, the state still has funds.
All right.
So we'll use those.
Well, good luck with those, and now, and you used a generic term, you called it an electric fence, my sense is, is that it's a chain link with barbs on top and not, not, that's an electric fence.
Yeah, did I say electric fences? Yeah, I'm not sure, you did.
It was listed as an electric fence in here, but it's not an electric fence.
No, definitely not.
Six foot with barbs on top or something like that.
Seven-foot barb fence, yeah.
What's the peak megawatt output of this solar garden?
The peak megawatts?
Yeah.
The size?
Yeah.
Five megawatts AC, 4.95.
Okay, the distribution lines, you talk about your line coming out underground up to the disconnect point from Excel, is that correct? Then it'll go overhead?
Yeah.
Along flagstaff?
So it'll all be underground, oh, actually, you don't see it anymore, it's in the other one, but yes, so from this point, towards flagstaff will be underground, based on what Excel told us.
Okay.
That will be Excel's own equipment, too.
All right.
We're not gonna own that.
Now, the last question, probably for Jared, Jared, timing with County Road 70 there?
I've heard not for a long time.
Not in my lifetime, at least, but that's not very long, though. Gentlemen, you did a great job, very detailed report, I like the environmental side, but also very thorough, I'm comfortable with your proposal for this community. I am gonna ask our residents now, sir, you had a comment? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Nathan Doll, I live on the 18,000 block of English Avenue on the north side of town. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition, though. We're a statewide group of farmers, landowners, taxpayers, ratepayers, business and community leaders and advocates of an all-the-above energy strategy across Minnesota. We support a lot of projects like these across the state, as we believe they protect private property rights, allow local investment, and help us contribute to a strong and resilient energy grid. One of the things that they mentioned in the presentation that I think warranted just a little bit of further elaboration was the production tax, because when people hear tax, they probably think, oh, great, I'm being charged more on my property taxes, or I'm gonna be charged more on my sale of electricity or whatever. This is exclusively paid by the operators of the project, not the taxpayers of Farmington or Dakota County. Unfortunately, Dakota County's gonna get 80% of that production tax revenue figures that they outlined earlier, but Farmington does get, will get 20% of that, which can be used to offset stuff that we wanna invest in. So just wanted to add a little bit of clarity to that, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Doll, thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. Anybody else? Can you come up here, please, ma'am? Thank you.
I'm Leslie Ninkirk, I live at 19731 Canary Path, and I'm curious about the length of the lease, should the current homeowner pass? Is there a condition that the lease continues with his inheriting, whoever lives, outlives him? Or is there the potential that the lease would end earlier than that?
Yeah, thank you. The lease will be assigned to the heir of Mr. Murphy, whoever he assigns it to, so there will be a continuation to the lease, most likely.
Answer your question? It's a good legal question, I'm glad he could answer it for you. Anybody else? All right, if not, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second, call the roll, please.
Winchettle?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
Snowback?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
From the commission, then, is the condition is permit to construct a community solar garden on the PID that Jared outlined, there are eight contingencies. Mr. Soriano, I'm gonna ask you, you accept all's eight contingencies?
Yes, we do.
All right, the applicant accepts, I'm with that, I'd look for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Motion and second, is there any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
Snowback?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Winchettle?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for coming out, and the great questions from our residents also. With that, then, we'll move into our second public hearing. This is a variance request for a maximum height requirement for fences. The location is 19500 Municipal Drive, which is our police station, the applicant is the city of Farmington. Tony, you're gonna take this.
I am, thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. There we go. Yes, the city of Farmington is seeking a variance from the maximum height allowed for fences in order to construct an eight-foot-tall fence. The subject property is at 19500 Municipal Drive, it is the Farmington Police Station. As far as the existing division, or the planned division review, the existing zoning, it's Zoned R1, Lodency Residential. It is public slash semi-public in our 2040 comprehensive plan, and the existing land use is the Northern Municipal Campus, and as I previously mentioned, the police station in particular. The city did receive a substantial grant in the amount of $869,000 last year for this particular fence installation. The fence would consist of a foot-off decorative metal fence with brick columns between each section of the fence. The brick would match the color and material of the existing police station building. Do want to mention that Section 10612, letter D, requires a variance to be approved for fences over six feet in height, up to eight feet in height, when constructed in residential areas. Therefore, the variance as be requested this evening is an additional two feet of height. The expected outcomes of this fence are the establishment of a robust physical barrier that restricts unauthorized access to the site, it safeguards sensitive areas such as the evidence room, equipment such as the city's fiber hub is located at the facility, and the personnel that work at the facility itself. This is the elevation of the fence, of what it would look like. It is, again, eight-foot tall, decorative metal, almost like a wrought iron type of situation-type fencing, with those brick columns in between, so it will be a very nice-looking fence. As far as the location is concerned, fencing will enclose the entire police station building, parking lot, and additional open space to the east and west of the existing facilities, fencing to be set back 20 feet from the right-of-way line of both 195th Street and Pilot Knob Road, and it will also be set back approximately 40 feet from the right-of-way of English Avenue on the very east side of the site. Do want to mention the fencing would encroach into an existing 100-foot-wide Northern Natural Gas easement that is located on the west side of the site, and you likely won't be able to see it on this, but that easement extends basically from here to basically the edge of the parking lot over here, so it is a substantial easement that goes through there, and encroachment agreement will have to be obtained from Northern Natural Gas for that fence to go into that easement. We've already had conversations with the gas company and are working through that process right now, so it sounds like they should not have any issues with granting that approval, but it's something that we'll have to make sure that we have in place prior to installation. Building permit, this will require a building permit, as the code does require any fence exceeding six feet in height to require a building permit, this will be a condition of approval. As the commission is aware, there are nine criteria that must be met to find basically what are called practical difficulties for approving of a variance. I won't necessarily go through these, they're in your packet and on the screen. Staff does believe that the criteria have been met in this instance, and will be requesting that the planning commission approve the variance of two additional feet of fence height. Therefore, the action that's requested this evening is approve the variance request of two feet of additional fence height contingent upon the following. First, submit an approval of a building permit application for the proposed fencing, and number two, obtaining an encroachment agreement with Northern Natural Gas for locating the fence within their gas pipeline easement.
All right, thank you, Tony, very nice job. With us tonight is the police chief, Steve, did you have anything to add to the staff report?
I can give a brief or rough timeline of the project. Currently, the project is out for bid, and it's open for bid until the 17th. Bids will be opened here in the chambers on that day at 2:00. Once we have read the bids, and we'll prepare a contract, present to council on the 21st, and that's when construction should begin, pretty quickly following that day. And we're looking at approximately a month and a half to two months of construction time to complete the project before the end of September.
Thank you.
Yeah, and official and, you know, formal notification to the public will be taken care of once we've secured a bid and a contract, and then we present to the public our project, and just so that they're aware of what's gonna be happening around the police station here in the future.
Perfect, thank you very much. If you stay available in case there's questions, this is a public hearing, are there any comments or questions regarding this variance request? Yes, ma'am?
Again, Leslie Ninkirk from 19731 Canary Path, and I'm curious if this fence will be open during the day for access to the police station, or what the hours might be for people who feel a need to find safe refuge there?
The perimeter fence will be, will have access points around it that have closable gates. Those gates will be secured except for the current main entrance to the police station. As you would approach it now and enter into the main area, the main parking lot, that gate will be open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and only closed in incidences of emergency when we need to secure the entire property. Outside of that, you can see in the picture here, that vertical line from the south end of the gate right there?
Yeah.
That is another gate that secures that east end of the property, employee parking, and then the other items, sensitive items that were mentioned previously.
Answer your question, ma'am? All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding this variance request? Seeing none, it's fitting that we ask Mr. Winchettle.
It's a much-needed project, I will say that, so, and I just appreciate the chief and his staff for applying for the grant and getting the grant, it goes a long ways for your employees and citizens, too, so, thank you, looks good.
Commissioner Snowback.
Thanks for your work, I'm excited to see you, when it's finished, it looks really nice.
Commissioner Berg?
A couple of questions. First of all, I think this is an awesome project, as someone who spends my day job doing risk management and risk mitigation, this is fantastic, because protecting critical infrastructure and secure locations is what I talk about almost all day, every day, so fantastic to see from that perspective. Our citizen asked one of my questions already, so that's great to hear that we have a plan for access for public need and things like that. The other question I have is, does this allow for future expansion? You know, as Farmington continues to grow, we may need a bigger police station, right? And does this allow for space for that as well?
Right, we do anticipate a future expansion, remodel to the police station in the coming years, and that is the main reason why that eastern end of the fence does about, all the way out to 40 feet short of English Avenue. The expansion to the police station, the plan is to have it come out in that direction, covering our entire current parking lot, and then that would bump out a roadway that goes around that, that end of the building out this way, so we wanted to make sure we had plenty of room over here for that.
Does that allow, then, enough parking for staff in the event that we move that out, that's all been accounted for already?
Right, yeah, staff, parking will be still in these areas just south of the building, the future building area, on the south side between the building and the fence, and then a garage that will move all of our city-owned vehicles inside and relieve a lot of that space outside for personal parking. Right now, we have a considerable number of police department vehicles that are parked out on the parking lot.
Okay, no, that's great, I'm glad to hear it. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Andy. Commissioner Teske?
Yeah, no, I, thank you, thank you for your service, I think it looks great, I appreciate the attention to detail around the aesthetics of the fence and the brick matching with the columns to support in between. My only other question is with regard to community engagement activities, will those be limited now that we have that fence will go in, and we won't be able to have helicopters land or activities like that?
I can't, the current seat of the building and the size of the fence, I don't believe that's gonna have any impact on the helicopter.
Okay.
I can't see the future building, how it extends out?
Sure.
The amount of space there, if that's gonna be impacted at all, but really, we see this as something that's gonna enhance our community engagement. Currently, when we have our open house, we use that west lawn for our bounce houses, and Public Works has to put in a, yeah, snow fencing, basically around the property to keep children away from the busy Pilot Knob Road, so this is gonna help with that, keeping everyone inside that's supposed to stay inside.
Contained.
And then on the east end, we have our canine demonstration.
Okay.
And it's always a huge concern that we have people approaching that we don't foresee coming in with dogs when we're doing our demonstration, and it's a danger to them and a danger to our dog, so this will help with that as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Simple question, Tony, maybe as much for you, cuz you mentioned the setback from right-of-way. So along 195th, how far behind the path is that fence gonna be?
It will be, it's probably closer to 30 feet, 35 feet.
Behind the path, so there's plenty of room still on the path for walkers, bicycles?
Absolutely.
And then from the trees on English?
It will be, that's probably, I'm guessing, 25 feet from those trees.
Okay, so plenty of distance.
Yeah.
The only thing I got, and it's not a solid fence, but sight...
Sightlines?
Yeah, sightlines, you know, both at 195th and at English, this won't impair that sightline at all?
It shouldn't, it's set back far enough to where it shouldn't have any impact on those, and with the roundabout at Pilot Knob and 195th, there shouldn't be any type of sightline issues at either of those intersections. And with the roundabout at Pilot Knob and Hundred Ninety-Fifth, there shouldn't be any type of sightline issues at either of those intersections.
Perfect, all right, that's good. I mean, that's a safety issue, and you're on top of that, so, I mean, you wouldn't do it if you, it was. And you answered all mine, you know, it was the timing, and you did a nice job of notification to our residents. They're always interested, and when the community's doing a project on, on community land, that they want to know when and how and where, and everything's like that. So I have no problem. You did a nice job, and I appreciate it. So with that, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, call the roll, please.
Roddy?
Yeah.
Snowback?
Yes.
Berg? Yes.
Winchuttle?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
All right, in front of the commission, then, is a variance request from the maximum height requirement for fences at nineteen five hundred Municipal Drive. We have two contingencies along with that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approvals. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Snowback?
Yes.
Berg? Yes.
Winchuttle?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes. All right, that concludes our agenda. Was there anything else from staff?
Nothing, sir.
Anything else from the commission? If not, I'll remind our residents and viewers, our next regular meeting is August twelfth. And with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This commission is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.